Number 12, School Committee meeting for Carver School Committee. Please stand up for the pledge, please.
The pledge is to be the leader of the United States of America and to be the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, get back to it. I wanted to thank Area 58 for being here tonight to cable cast our meeting. We have comments from the general public. Would anybody like to get up? Anybody have anything to say to the school committee? Seeing none. Comments from the AIPC.
Good morning. This is kind of the state I'm in right now. I was going to mention, I'm like working in a middle school right before the holidays. It's kind of crazy. Bear with me. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. So, I know we've mentioned quite a bit about the Funder Future, but just recently Governor Baker actually signed the bill into action. So that's really exciting and we at the MTA and the AIPC are definitely celebrating that win. One point five billion dollars over the next few years going back into public education, increasing, you know, for Carver in particular, increasing transportation for special ed and increasing to the circuit breaker. So with that in mind, across the nation and state educators are finding their voice. They're asking that school districts provide the resources their students need, you know, whether this is in California, Arizona, Oklahoma. They're asking for school nurses, guidance counselors, wraparound services. So we in Carver, us educators, have been thinking deeply about what we would like to see. And so we're, one of the, couple of the things that are on our list of wishes are definitely full-time pairs for the kindergarten, which we are now calling ESP, Education Support Professionals. We really believe that the beginning years are so important and our kindergarten teachers and preschool educators have been really struggling these last years with the part-time support and that's something that we're looking for. And also in our school, the middle high school, we're looking, we would like a technology educator because the, the students have a variety of different experiences with technology. However, as we know, there's lots of things to be taught as far as appropriate use and understanding biases with technology. There's just an array of, you know, not even one person could do, but at least it would be a start because we think in this day of age is a really important aspect. So, we would like you to think of that as the creating the budget happens and we realize that's a really difficult and heavy task, however, hoping with the new bill and moving forward, that can be something that is, comes true for tuition. So in closing, I hope everyone has a nice holiday and enjoy the next few weeks and the time off we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. We're going to take student council updates first.
So welcome to Morgan Campbell from student council.
Welcome.
Sorry, Morgan.
No, you're fine.
Thank you.
So to start off, on behalf of Missing November's meeting, I would like to go over results from our Make-A-Wish project on Halloween that we did. After asking donations from staff and students, student council donated over a thousand dollars to Make-A-Wish, doubling what we donated last year. As for the month of November, pep rally was our main focus. This event was a success because student council's main goal was to increase participation and focusing on school unity. So we did this by asking the band to play as grades entered the gym. We minimized games which grades competed against each other and Mr. Schultz took the floor recognizing the football and the cheer team before their big Thanksgiving Day game. So the papers that I passed out were our new event that we have coming up next Friday. So for years it's been student council's goal to introduce a new event to the school and this month that is what we are doing. So next Friday is our first ever Crusader Day. So instead of a full day of classes, it will be half-day schedule. So after classes, student council will kind of take over the building and to start off, there will be a 30-minute holiday concert from our band and chorus. During period four, it will be a community service hour where students will be making cards for children in hospitals and care packages for troops. The cards will be hand-delivered from students on our executive board, but as for, as for the care packages, we are partnering, partnering with an organization called Operation Shoebox. And a member on our, on our executive board, Olivia Camello, she kind of took this project above and beyond. So instead of keeping this project within the school, she decided to open it up to the town, getting donations from local businesses and citizens of Carver. These care packages will be made during this period as well and sent out to the organization to be distributed. After this hour, students will go to their homerooms for a scavenger hunt that will take place through all grades and prizes for high school and middle school homeroom will be given out. After that, students will be broken up to events they choose to take part in such as bingo volleyball, which is on the backside. So sign-ups for that will be Monday and Tuesday, which me and Mr. Schultz will be organizing to kind of keep numbers around what we imagine to work successfully. And we're excited to run this event to see how it turns out, but as far as we have heard, the majority of teachers are on board with this new idea.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Oh, this is a great idea. Where did it kind of come from? Did you guys take it from another district or something?
So, in student council, we kind of work with a bigger organization called CMAS, which is a region of the state. So we talked to them and some other schools have done something like this. So we kind of wanted to bring it back, but we like put a spin on it because they do a lot of like specific events, but we wanted to open up that last hour to kind of have a student choice of what they wanted to do for that period. So the idea came from other schools and then we kind of put our own little spin on it to what will work for our culture.
Nice, great idea.
Yeah, I just want to add that I want to thank the student council for taking the lead and the setting up the Crusader Day and I know the administration, the teachers, I've been talking a lot about it and, and I really think it's been the students, the teachers and the administration working together to have this event happen.
Yeah.
And people are pretty excited about it. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Morgan. Can you elaborate on Operation Shoebox? I saw the box downstairs, actually.
Yeah.
So is it shoes people need or is that what you?
So, we sent out a list and it's been on like Carver Helping Carver and everything of like things that people can be donating, so like toothpaste and think like necessities and everything like that. So then-
Stuff that will fit into a shoebox that you can ship.
Yeah. So they send us how they want them packaged, so obviously like food and everything like that will be separated. So we'll be doing that and then we send them everything. So the, like objects will be divided evenly among each box and then we send it to them and they give it out to the troops.
That's great.
Thank you.
And unbeknownst to the student council, the fifth grade teams at the elementary school actually took on the same project at the same time.
Yeah.
Because I think the student council wanted to expand into the elementary school as well, but the fifth graders are doing it there. So we're doing Operation Shoebox at the elementary school as well. So it's actually happening, it's actually happening district-wide.
Morgan, when is this?
When is that? Next Friday. Well, the 20th.
The day before the holiday break.
Nice.
And I saw you need prizes for bingo. Are you putting it out for just the school or?
Yes, so-
Anybody donate these?
It was kind of a problem with student council for like budget-wise, so we brought it to Mr. Schultz and he kind of opened it up and he's getting all of the prizes for us because we wanted to have bigger prizes to increase interest in that event. So he opened it up for bigger things that-
So Mr. Schultz, the administration's taken on the responsibility of getting those prizes.
Getting prizes, okay.
Everything like that.
Terrific idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All righty. Approval of minutes.
Captain's Council.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Welcome to Azlin Deljunas, who is our soccer-
Didn't mean to interrupt you guys.
Girl soccer captain and Andrew Walker, football captain.
Thank you guys for having us. We're here to give an update for the month of December.
And to start off, I'd just like to talk about winter sports. They have reached a record number of students participating this season and that includes boys basketball, which is three levels, including freshman, JV and varsity, and girls basketball, which is JV and varsity, and that's indoor track, girls and boys, wrestling, gymnastics and hockey. And all of these teams will enter the official schedule next week. And Captain Council also participated in the community event of Reeds Across Carver and that helped Towns Veterans Organization, which was able to provide 125 reeds to veterans or veterans graves. And we placed over 300 reeds on every marked veteran's grave throughout the cemeteries in Carver this season and we look forward to making this an annual event.
That's great.
Great.
We're also planning for our annual B and 11 program we do with the seventh graders. It's like a leadership program that we do. It's like a half-day and then we bring all the kids to the gym and we do like different sorts of activities and games. We'd also like to recognize the Boys Soccer Division for Sportsmanship Award that the boys soccer team received recently.
That's great.
And Mike Swicki being the Tobin Player of the Year. Yeah, that's all we have for, for tonight. We hope everyone has a nice holiday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
All right. Now approval of minutes.
So we can't do the October 1 again until James is here?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so just November 14. Anybody have any changes or want to review the?
No.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the Thursday, November 14.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 14 minutes, session minutes.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? All right, communications.
We'll move right, we'll move right into our reports from superintendent.
Should we, can we go back to the October 10?
Sure, when James comes in.
James comes in, okay.
So personnel updates for this month since our last meeting. We have a few new hires. Barbara Barton in Food Services. Kim Mitchell as the Transportation Clerk. Steven DeMurs is the new Bus Driver. Kylie Shoemaker as an ESP at the Middle High School. And we did have one resignation the past month, Maria Santos as a Bus Driver. Our next presentation, actually, we're excited to talk about an event that happened at the Middle High School in November. It's called Shadow a Student. So Mr. Martin is here and Sarah Shabino and I believe Morgan Campbell's going to be part of the discussion and Mrs. Cornock, Tiffany Cornock. So if we could welcome them up.
Good.
Yeah, I don't know, those mics are on, we could split up. You could split up two or two. We split you up.
You're right across from each other.
So I have, I had a little introduction on this one, but I'll let you do. I'll let you tell them a little what the event is.
Good evening. I'm Mike Martin. I'm the Assistant Principal at Carver Middle High School. This year as part of our Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, we formed some Safe and Supportive ambassadors and their goal really was to look at some of the data that we received last year in our first year when, when we kind of did an overview of our needs at the school. And some of the feedback we keep getting was some students were suggesting, I don't think adults know what it's like to be a student these days. So we kind of took that as our charge and I kind of introduced an initiative that, that I did when I was at my former school where I shadowed a student as part of this, it's a national initiative. And I participated in it as an assistant principal and literally I walked around with a student and went about their daily schedule, going to lunch with them, actually met them on the bus, had a bus ride on a school bus coming to school, went to their classes, participated in their after-school stuff. So we decided we would like to do that at Carver. So we put it out to staff to see what staff would be interested and we were hoping for a boy and a girl from every grade, six through 12, which would be 14 students. And we got some overwhelming feedback from staff and we managed to do that. We actually had 13 people shadow, 13 teachers shadowed 13 different students. And the teachers kind of came into it with an idea of, there was a set learning goal and the teachers could choose their learning goal. So if you're a high school teacher who taught a lot of AP classes, maybe you wanted to follow a student similar to those that you teach and follow an AP student, just to really see what the rigor is like because a lot of the AP high-flying kids, they're also so involved in a lot of other things at school, so they have, you know, 12, 14, 16-hour days. So we kind of ran the gamut of what teachers wanted as far as they wanted to see what the rigor was like, what a typical school day was like, and that was from sixth grade all the way through 12th grade. So we did this over the course of a week. We didn't have 13 teachers out on the same day. We actually staggered it. And we actually have a teacher and a student here tonight who, one was a shadower and one was a shadowee. They did not shadow each other. Mrs. Shabino here is part of the Safe and Supportive Schools ambassadors, but we, we had a bunch of different learning goals. I know there's some pictures up that you guys can see and those were pretty much all the shadows and shadowees, but at this point I'd like to maybe turn it over to the shadow and the shadowee just to kind of give, have them give you, you know, some anecdotes about what their day was like and feel free to maybe ask questions.
I want to pull that microphone over to whoever's speaking.
Okay, I guess I'm going to go first. So I'm Tiffany Cornock. I'm the chemistry teacher at the high school and I shadowed a freshman student, so one that I haven't met before. She is an honors student and the day was a busy day. So the first two periods we had an exam and then she had a break, which was study. So we, it wasn't really a break, but it wasn't any more exam, so it was, it was good and we-
Did you take both the tests?
I did. Don't ask me my scores. I haven't taken those classes in a long time, so I, you know, whatever. But I, they were stressful. Like it was stressful because I took the test and I imagine they were more stressed out than I was because it mattered to them, you know, what they got, but I wanted to do well and not look like a fool. So I did the best I could. And then we had phys ed, which I thought was a lot of fun, but exhausting and changing. I was a little stressed out about getting in on time and getting out on time. And the student I shadowed never went to the bathroom, so I did have to leave her and she never stopped at her locker. I did find the hallways were crazy chaotic, but the, the really positive thing I found was the kids were all really great. Like they were all like encouraging and supportive and not just with me, but like with other students in the class. So like when they were struggling, we were in physics last period and everybody like worked together. There was a general, I don't know, like team feeling. So it was, it was a really good experience in that way to like look at that from a student's perspective. I know it was a positive experience in that, in that manner. It was exhausting. It was a long day and the kids work hard, or this student and the people around her work hard. Lunch was good. I bought lunch. I thought it was good. And I sat with the kids in the lunchroom and they included me in their conversation. Everything was, it was, it was a good experience, so.
That's great.
Yeah. When I first, when Mr. Treska first asked me if he could shadow me, I was kind of nervous because I didn't think he was going to get like the experience that he should be getting in my life because I thought that like friends and everything were going to be different, but that was not the case. Lunch and everything like that was still the same, so I was kind of happy for that because it was like actually what was happening. But throughout the day, it seemed kind of relaxed. It was obviously weird having Mr. Treska like all the time, but it was kind of relaxed as a senior because I have like an independent study with chef and then another study, so my classes are kind of more relaxed than like a freshman would be. But then after he also came to my internship, which I thought was really cool because instead of hearing me talk about it all the time, he was actually there and like got to see. And then after we were talking about going to internship and everything and how it's like such a nice break to have throughout the day and he liked that a lot. And then towards the-
What's your internship, Morgan? Just fill out the resume.
I interned down at the State Forest, so we do a lot of like office work and patrolling and the forest and everything like that. So he got to see that. And then, so the day was kind of fine, but I told him how throughout the day is usually like when it's time to do all your schoolwork and like homework and everything like that because after school is usually like my most busiest hours. So internship was actually at the end of the day. So we went there and then it was time to like rush back to school because we had two meetings that we had to go to. So we went to Captain's Council and then I had a student council meeting. And then after that, he didn't come to work with me, but I had to go to work after that. And so we were talking the next day and he was saying how my school hours seemed to be relaxed with classes and everything like that, but realizing like how important it is to get my homework done during those hours because like after school and everything like that is so busy. But I think it was a good takeaway and I really liked the idea of it when I first heard it. So then we had fun and he, it was nice getting, letting him see what it's like to be in my shoes for the day.
So I, I'll just talk a little bit about some of the, the feedback that we got from the teachers that participated. So like Ms. Cornock said, one of the things that we heard over and over from the teachers were how, was how chaotic the passing was and some teachers thought it was too short and some teachers thought it was too long. Many of the teachers said that they were exhausted by the end of the day for various reasons. Some because they thought that they were sitting too much, others because they thought that the, the day was just kind of like too fast-paced and there wasn't enough downtime for their student. And then some said that they just found themselves exhausted from the rigor of, of what the students were doing. But the, the good things that, the good takeaways that the teachers had were that they, they felt the students were all supported very well, whether it was socially or academically. That they thought that there were a lot of people within the school that genuinely cared about our students, which was nice to hear. And the classes were engaging and the teachers, the teaching styles were varied and that also the teachers who participated felt fortunate to be part of a school that supported their, the families and the staff and students in so many different ways, which was nice feedback to hear. So, do you want to talk about what's next?
Sure.
Do you want to talk about it?
So we met as a, a group, the Safe and Supportive ambassadors and we, we kind of debriefed and said, okay, we have this information. We have really 13 case studies that we can look at and we were kind of thinking, you know, what do we do with it? It's great having this information. A lot of teachers and students said, that looked really cool. Can I do it with my teacher or can I do it with my student? So we're looking to do this again, maybe after New Years, get some more data. But I think what it, what it showed us is there has to be some type of, not necessarily recess, but maybe some type of release valve during the day for, for kids. Because I think some teachers think, ah, you know, students have it easy, you know, I'm in here for the same number of hours, not realizing that they have a prep and, you know, sometimes you have another adult in the room and they can go to the bathroom. So for kids, it's, you're really running back and forth and when Ms. Cornock says, I can't believe it, you know, she didn't go to the bathroom, you know, that's the reality. And I think as adults, we just going to take it for granted. Oh, it was way tougher when we were kids. So, you know, we want to kind of shed some, really some empathy and make sure that we're getting the best out of the students and just have them do that for 180 days is absolutely exhausting. So I know a lot of schools now, they have, a lot of schools in the Cape, I think Falmouth have something called Clipper Hour and then, you know, they have this power hour concept, but during the day, working within the parameters of the existing school schedule, there is a time to really just exhale. It's not lunch, because lunch is frantic as well. It's just a time for students to maybe stop what they're doing, look at their homework, check in with a teacher, maybe of a class that they didn't see because it dropped and they were absent yesterday, so they haven't seen that teacher in a few days. So a lot of schools are moving to this power hour concept. We've talked about it at our alt meetings, we've talked about it at faculty meetings about, you know, is this something doable in Carver? And I, I think our next charge is Safe and Supportive ambassadors is to really kind of pick this apart and see how we can make something like this work for us.
Sounds interesting. I'd like to see the, or hear the additional benefits you think could come for this, from that going forward. I, my one question, actually Morgan answered it, but the one question I had was, do you think the kids acted differently that the teachers were, you know, knowing the teachers were there, but you said they didn't, you know?
No.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, I was worried about that too, but it was, we all made the same jokes at lunch and in classes and everything.
So you had to fill them in though? You had to like catch them up?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, sometimes Mr. Treska's like, what? And I was like, we'll tell you later.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns, comments?
Just a comment. I really like the vision on this. I know when you came in, you talked a little bit about this and then now it's come to fruition and the what next? And I'm really interested to see where that goes from here. So if maybe a couple months, you know, after you've had a little bit of time to figure out what the next steps are, because I think it's a great program. And it gives a respect and that's great because then you get to look at, people don't look at it as just, that's my teacher, or the teacher's not looking at it as just, that's my student. And that is awesome and that's, so thank you for the vision.
And just to add on to that, I mean, obviously if, if there was any consideration in moving towards some sort of a power hour concept next year within our schedule, that would clearly come back to the committee and present that for, you know, the committee's approval if we were going to move forward in that direction.
I think that might, that's the thing that interests me because I think if you ask anybody in this career with the rigor of what's expected these days, the only thing we miss more than anything is time. So to, I don't know how if you keep the same timeframe, I think it's a great idea. I agree. But I'm interested to see how you can configure to fit that time in and still accomplish what needs to be done.
And so many students are running out of the building for a host of reasons, whether it be childcare, they need to work, they're, they're a wage earner in their family, they have other things that a lot of teachers, the kids they really want to see stay over just don't have that opportunity. And when we, the last district I worked at, we, we implemented this for a couple of years and some teachers were saying, it was great, I saw such and such for the first time, they were a senior now, but this is the first time they can have stayed after, but that staying after happens during the school day, so they can see them.
When I first joined this committee, one of my first questions was for the elementary school, was the extension of recess, like, you know, following Finland's model and the benefits of that. And this is almost what it, I guess it is, like a more graduated source, kind of recess for the older kids.
Yeah.
You know, kind of like you said, to be a, a vent almost, to slow them down a little bit. You know, I think it's a great idea.
But it also, it teaches them independence because these are students that, you know, they have, whether it be an hour and within that hour, there's lunch built into it, but they can really say, okay, I need to see this teacher for 10 minutes, that teacher. I have a soccer game on the vineyard. I'm going to get back at this time and I have a test tomorrow. So they can really apportion their time and a lot of, a lot of colleges that have high school students that have a concept like this, they report back to their high school that your students can handle the independence of college better than other students from traditional schools.
That's great. All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation, we have a presentation on our CAP program, the Carver Alternative Program. I believe Karen Tyker, Mike Doyle, Mike Schultz, I believe is joining them. I'm not sure. We'll give-
Want to split up again?
And Sarah Shabino, who's the Adjustment Counselor in the program. And if you remember, a few, a few years back, we approved the development of the CAP program as an alternative program to meet some of our students' needs who had some social emotional concerns or was just struggling with the traditional day. And the opportunity maybe support some more students within the district and maybe also bring some district, students back from out of district. So this is going to kind of give us an update on the program and some of the changes that's happened in the program and where we, where we stand this year.
So we did move the program over to central office. That was the big change this year and just did some tweaking. So I feel like that's worked really well. We had some concerns about that and if the students were going to feel too isolated and how they would do in that kind of setting, but so far I think it's worked really well. So the, Mr. Doyle did a really nice job over the summer of setting the room up. So there's a picture of kind of the, the classroom space and then there is that kitchen in there, so they have an opportunity to fix their own meals or cook group meals or, or do activities related to that. Currently we have, I think there's seven students and two getting ready to start. So Mike, Mike can talk to the schedule a little bit.
Mr. Doyle, the teacher in the classroom? So our typical schedule, it's a bit more relaxed. We start at 9:00 AM, which is nice, and classes don't actually start till 9:30 and they run till about 11:00. Those are in-house classes taught by faculty or staff. Then we have a break and then the students move on to independent work. That could- Currently we have, I think there's seven students and two getting ready to start. So Mike, Mike can talk to the schedule a little bit.
Mr. Doyle, the, uh, teacher in the classroom? So our typical schedule, it's a bit more relaxed, we start at nine AM, which is nice. Uh, and classes don't actually start till nine thirty and they run till about eleven. Those are in-house classes taught by, uh, faculty or staff. Uh, then we have a break and then the students move on to independent work. That could, we, for the most part, let them pick their schedule and manage their schedule. Uh, it can consist of online classes, special projects, internships. And some of our students have assignments from other teachers at the main campus. So that, maybe they're working on a class that, for whatever reason, they're not taking at the main campus, they're working on it over at, uh, Central. And really it gives them an opportunity to be independent, to manage their schedule. And for some of the social emotional needs, it gives them an opportunity to manage a workload rather than, uh, complete a certain task every period.
We've also, we found that we needed to, the online's hard for math, particularly for some of the students. So we have brought in some tutors, um, during the day if kids need it, um, for math and CAS prep. Um, and we do, we had a couple of kids that wanted to do foreign language and had already been doing some. So we brought in one of the foreign language teachers to do some tutoring, um, with them so that they could keep, keep working on the, that class.
So our curriculum, it's a hybrid curriculum. Uh, we have three in-house classes that we're currently doing, as well as a very diverse, uh, selection from our online courses. So we have students that have taken German this year, which wouldn't be offered at our main campus. They have the opportunity to be able to do that. As far as our curriculum in-house, I teach the CAP history and English. It's designed to develop an understanding of local and American history while providing multiple opportunities to contemplate Western ideals through reflective writing, research, canonized literature, influential essays and primary source texts. Really we're working on some of the roots of democracy, rational thinking and individualism.
So I, um, am Sarah Shabano, I'm the Adjustment Counselor for the program. I teach two classes, um, in-house. I teach a personal finance class, which basically just kind of teach them, teaches them basic financial literacy skills, um, how to open a bank account, savings, budgeting, um, things like that. And then just foundational life skills associated with the world of work. So we go over taxes, how to fill out, um, and file your own taxes, how to read your pay stubs, um, the tax rates that get taken out of your check, things like that. Um, we also went over, um, a part, as a part of that class and also something that will be included in their portfolio is they did, um, a career interest inventory. So they kind of, if they weren't sure what they wanted to do, it kind of gave them some ideas about things that would fit with their likes and their personality and things like that. Um, and I also teach another class called Life Hacks. Um, that class is based with a, a DBT, which is dialectical behavioral therapy-based curriculum, which is a tier one support, um, for all students that focuses on mindfulness, distress tolerance, um, interpersonal relationships and, um, and emotional regulation. So that's just kind of like a basic overall curriculum that can be, um, distributed to like all students, whether they have social emotional issues or not, um, that just gives them those basic foundational skills. Um, and then in Life Hacks, I also kind of go over things that they might be interested in that wouldn't be covered in a general curriculum, like you saw our picture of us cooking. So we, I tied in the lesson to the personal finance where they came up with a recipe, they came up with the ingredients list, a budget for that shopping trip, um, and then we actually made that recipe and, and, and cooked it in, in the class. So some things that are a little bit different too. Um, so as Mr. Doyle said, we try in the afternoon to kind of give them some opportunities to, to get out of the central office classroom and go out for internships, um, or field trips or different projects. So right now, um, we've done a Plymouth field trip. We are trying to schedule another field trip to the Otis Air Force Base with Officer Wall. Um, some of our students have internships at the police station, the Carver Police Station with maintenance or at the elementary school. Um, we've had a student that's gone out to explore the Gateway Program at, um, Massa Soya Community College. We have a garden project in the back of, um, central office where we're putting in raised beds and the students will, will plant various things, um, in the springtime. Um, as I said, they're doing digital portfolios, so they're also working on the website design for their digital portfolios. Um, and each week they go out to Wellspring Farms in Rochester, which is a therapeutic farm. Um, and the students have access to go each Tuesday. Um, they decide on that Tuesday whether they want to go or not. Um, and they, they do things like grooming the horses, they've started to be able to ride a little bit. Um, and they just kind of get out in that environment, which a lot of them really enjoy.
We've been able to implement an open campus privilege this year. So for our eleventh and twelfth graders who are up to academic standards, their attendance, they're meeting their attendance requirements, they're able to walk to Dandies, Gecko, Cumberland Farms, Giorgio's. They have about twenty minutes to do that and, uh, so far it's been really successful. Some of the student feedback, uh, is they love that there's no drama, I work really hard at that. They like the later start time and they like being able to walk to the store in the mornings. Uh, with some of the, the younger students, they just walk to the store with staff. So they still have sort of that open campus privilege.
So some of the, um, some of the future things I think that we're trying to work on and some of our challenges are just making even more connections to the school and community, trying to find even more like, um, internship, job shadowing opportunities and just ways to get the kids connected over to the school when it's appropriate and, um, you know, when they're interested in doing that. Um, we've got a work-study program, a work-study program that Sarah started working on, um, to be able to give credits to kids that are working full-time or most, you know, close to full-time. Um, we're still kind of working on that a little bit. One of our biggest challenges has been transportation. So to be able to get kids to just get to these little things, even just to get over to the high school to do something quickly or get over to an internship at elementary school, um, it's been a challenge to figure out how to do that transportation. So, um, we're working on that, but since transportation's been a huge challenge this year all around, um, this is just one more addition to that, it's been a little challenging. We are looking to get some of the staff, um, trained possibly with their seventies so that they can actually just transport the kids themselves. And then the attendance is always an issue for these kids. We, I think that's another focus area we want to keep working on and keep helping them. Even though we've created a program that allows us to keep working with them when they can't attend, we still want them to like improve their attendance. Um, some of them are doing great with that, some of them it's still a big struggle. And I guess I didn't really say in the beginning, I'm assuming people remember or know, but that, like this program is definitely designed for those kids that have had a historic trouble coming to school due to, um, anxiety, depression, trauma, um, just a difficult time making the regular school environment work for them. Um, so they are students that have a history of just not being able to get to school or being very far behind, not being able to complete coursework and sometimes they're often, um, short on credit, so.
The only thing I would add is that, um, I think Mike and Sarah have done a really nice job developing this program. It's in a new space, they've given kids the autonomy to sort of develop a space, create the space how they want, sort of create their own curriculum in some ways and then give them a lot of autonomy in terms of reaching out to community and developing, um, either an opportunity to observe, uh, a, a local business or be part of a business or explore careers. So, um, the kids have had a lot of support, but also autonomy to really develop what's working for them. And, um, it is a lot of independent sort of work that they're doing and they're supporting and I think they've done a really nice job.
Mike took my thunder a little bit, but, you know, really, but if you look back two years ago, I also want to give Karen a lot of credit. Karen kind of had a vision of, this is a program I think I'd like to develop, uh, to support some of our students who are struggling to come to school. Uh, now we've hired staff that are implementing that program, Mike and Sarah are doing a great job and it's really been successful. And I want to give Mr. Schultz credit too, because Mr. Schultz and Karen, Mike and Karen have worked really hard together in supporting the staff, uh, and it's, it's really been a positive thing to s- to see what's happened. And, and there's a huge piece, the last couple of years, our dropout rate, uh, we haven't done the official presentation for this year, we're not having students drop out of school. We, you know, I think last year it was, uh, well, last year was one, I think the year before, two years was one. Two years ago was one, last year was two, I believe. So yes, that's not zero, we always want the dropout rate to be zero. Uh, but we're providing, uh, many opportunities, many different ways to students to reach a diploma. Uh, and this program is another way, another opportunity that allows students to reach a diploma and not drop out of school. And, and so there's a tremendous amount of support within the school community and this is one way that's happening. So I wanted to just thank the four of them for, for all the work they're doing.
I agree, thank you very much. I mean, one of the things that we've always talked about here is trying to get the, trying to reach the kids that slip through the cracks. You know, and I think having an in-house program is, you, you talked about it a few years ago, when you started this, is very beneficial to keep the kids here in Carver with their friends, keep them wanting to come to school. Um, my one question, we saw the feedback about the kids saying they like to go to the store and things like that. But have you noticed whether vocally or just by their attitudes, that they're more excited to come to school? Like they really want to come or like being in this program? Or is it?
Yeah, it, it's not the most optimistic group in general. And school's still school, we're always pushing them, uh, for sure. But yeah, they are, they're, they're students who, if you look at their records, who are never in school, who are at school. So I mean, that speaks volumes for itself.
That's great.
Yeah, I, I was over there for a little while today and, um, they're in there and they're sitting there doing, doing their work, which in a lot of times, that wasn't something they would do in a regular classroom. But they're independently doing their work and they're sort of selecting some of their online courses, so they have some, some choice. But they're doing it.
That's great.
Yeah, looks good. When I, when I go down there too, I mean, it always, it just feels good, it looks good. Um, the kids seem comfortable, it's relaxed, it's definitely a relaxed atmosphere. So I feel like they're do- they're doing a great job.
Headlet.
Yeah, uh, I'm just curious about the online courses, like do, is there a bank of courses? Is it through like TECO or is, or how, how do they choose their courses?
It's through Edgenuity and it's all aligned with the mass curriculum. And they basically will go over with guidance what they need to accomplish and they have a very wide selection they can choose from. And so if they have a particular interest, we can, you know, set them up with that particular interest or they can just take what they would generally take.
Yeah, Edgenuity is like a platform that we bought. Um, and so it's a bank of classes that have been taught by licensed teachers and it's basically video instruction and with activities afterwards. You know, it can be dry a little bit sometimes, but there is ability for, um, the teachers to customize it so they can go in and replace some assignments with other things and, um-
And we actually use Edgenuity beyond just the CAP program. We use it for a bunch of students, for students who need to be tutored or are sick or, you know, have a medical problem or it's a platform that we use for, in several areas.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I'd like to thank you guys because this is, I think this is a big step and I, I'd love to see it grow. Because I think to Mr. Martin's point earlier, on a normal day, if you have normal coping mechanisms, it's a hectic day. It's hard and you add anxiety and we lose a lot of kids that way. Because not everybody's built to deal with what school requires these days, it's difficult. It's a really big challenge and quite often, those kids that you say slip through the cracks kind of get left alone and, and they don't get to do what they want to do. To your point, uh, my first experience in education, we would have to go in a van and pick up the kids and bring them if we wanted them to come to school. And the fact that they're there is the step, that shows that they, that they care more because they're actually coming. And I, I think there's probably far more students that we could reach in situations like that. And, and I would love to see something like this grow and I appreciate everything you guys are doing in that aspect. So thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Bridges and Math follow-up.
So I, last year the committee, uh, approved, uh, a change in the math curriculum at the elementary school.
Enthusiastically.
Yes, and so we went to, uh, Bridges and Math and we're implementing in, uh, grades K through two. And so we're here this evening, Meredith and our math coach Jen Kelly are going to kind of give us an update on the implementation of Bridges at the elementary in grades K through two. So Jen, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Meredith, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just arranging this. Um, so we wanted to give a ten second, um, kind of reminder from our June meeting when we, um, presented to the committee about these changes and, and kind of how we came to, um, the decision to adopt Bridges and then give you an update of where we are a few months into the school year. So, um, we in, last April, um, the curriculum committee that was comprised of at least two representatives from each grade level and was inclusive of a cross-section of different teachers. So special educators, primary teachers, administrators, math coach, curriculum, um, that sort of thing, got together to study what we could do to support math. Obviously everyday math was no longer, um, aligned with the state frameworks. But really what we wanted to do is dive into a knowledge transfer about current best practice. So Jen and I spent time, um, presenting to the whole school. It was really important for us to take teacher feedback and there were multiple opportunities for all staff to be surveyed or to weigh in and work through different protocols and make sure that this process was inclusive of what they wanted. And ultimately what ended up happening is we asked teachers to work in grade level teams to define based on current best practice, what it would look like if they could, um, develop their ideal classroom for math. What would it be going on, what's, what would students be doing? And obviously the bigger the wording here, the more times it showed up when, um, when we polled people. So they want to provide learning opportunities for students with real-world connections. Basically prepare them for success beyond fifth grade. And with that said, um, in our studies of curriculum, council determined that Bridges was the best opportunity to do that and that it provided an emphasis on deep conceptual understanding, solving problems, an emphasis on number sense, process versus the quote-unquote correct answer. Making sure that there were comprehensive resources so that teachers did not have to go on to less juried sites like Teachers Pay Teachers and some of the other things on the internet. But really a full complement of support, not only for students that were on grade level, but those students that may need individualized support in terms of enrichment or remediation. So, um, they decided unanimously to adopt as opposed to pilot. And we are in year one adoption, um, for grades K through two. Um, in our transition classroom in K one, they're also using this. And we, um, we came up with a professional development plan last year and we've largely stuck to that and have definitely added, um, some opportunities for teachers. So the first piece of that is in June, Jen set up training for teachers and made sure that, um, teachers had materials prior to leaving for the summer. Teachers were also given the opportunity to spend the, the two days directly after school got out, working together in grade level teams under Jen's facilitation, really looking at the program and starting to unpack the components that they would need to be successful. And then when student, excuse me, when teachers came back in August, they had, again, under Jen's facilitation, a full professional development day, um, around Bridges to make sure that everyone was getting off on the right foot. And, um, our three half-days at the elementary school, teachers in K through two have opportunities to work in grade level teams under Jen's facilitation, um, to do more with Bridges professional development. She'll explain her coaching model and the communication that we've had to families and how teachers, um, are working through Bridges so far.
So my role, um, obviously as part of the math curriculum council was to be encouraging and to really look at all the avenues that we wanted to pursue as a school. Um, but this year, um, I've really taken on a different lead than I have in the past. I've always supported the math curriculum and math instruction, but this year I've really dived into more of a coaching model than I have in the past, which has been really exciting and really, um, different and I've really enjoyed the challenge. Um, so I'm working, um, with grade levels on coaching cycles. And this year, because it's a new program and because it's new to the teachers, it's really a voluntary opportunity. So, um, at the beginning of the year, I presented to all the pre-K to two teachers, actually one pre-K teacher in our transitional classroom and, um, K one and two. And I asked them to sign up for anywhere between a six to eight week cycle with me. And, um, when they signed up, um, I was completely overwhelmed because they all wanted me to come into their rooms in September and October. And unfortunately, there's only one of me in so many times of the day that I can get there. But I was able to get into at least two teachers' classrooms a day for the whole full math block. And, um, that consists of very different things in different classrooms. It really depends on how the teacher wants to use me and how I can support them. So I've done anything from planning and preparing with teachers, actually getting them ready to start the lesson, where they, they're teaching the lesson and I'm giving them feedback. Um, I've co-taught with teachers, um, we've planned together and said, I'm going to take this part, you're going to take this part. We've executed the lesson. I've modeled lessons for teachers, um, where I've gone and completely taken over to help give them some support and some guidance. Um, I've engaged with students during the lesson, so the teacher will ask me, hey, can you work with this small group of students today? Can you, um, kind of see where- Can you kind of see where their needs are and kind of support them where they're at? So that's been really exciting. I've also worked a lot this year with assessing individual students who may be struggling to be able to do some more formalized assessments to kind of look to see where, we can pinpoint where their gaps might be and what interventions we can provide for them. We're constantly analyzing student data on the individual level, to the classroom level, to the grade level. And that's done through grade level teams, through our data meetings, through our PLC meetings. And we will do another round of grade level meetings coming at the end of January, beginning of February, where the grade levels will get together and analyze all the students in the grade level. And during this whole process, depending on where each teacher kind of uses me, we're always reflecting and we're always going back to see what we can do better because this, this program is excellent and it's just new for all of us. So it's a learning experience for all of us just to get our feet wet. And we received some great support from some other districts who have already implemented Bridges, which has been great to make some connections. And one of, two of actually the teachers from Sandwich had come down to give us some PD and to give our teachers some support. So we've been in constant communication with them to be able to kind of bounce ideas off of teachers who have done the program for a year. And that's been a great way to, you know, be a resource. The Math Learning Center, who publishes Bridges, they're out in Oregon. They've also been very helpful. On our February 4th half-day, we are actually going to be Skyping in with the authors of the Math Learning Center to get, have teachers, ask them directly questions and kind of get some feedback of where we are. So the structure of Bridges, okay, sorry. The structure of Bridges is actually, there's two components to Bridges lessons. There is a number corner component and then there is a Bridges lesson. So the number corner component is actually what you would consider like a traditional calendar routine if you've ever been in an elementary school classroom where you go over the days of the week and so forth. This is completely beefed up. It is not the traditional, today is Monday, you know, going through the days of the week and the weather and the temperature outside. It is much more intense. It's much more based on number sense. It's really putting some practical skills in the hands of that routine to help them. It's very skill-based and help them review skills they're learning. And then there's the Bridges lesson, which is the core component math lesson, which is comprised of whole group instruction, small group instruction, and then learning activities that are, students can work independently on. And, but all of the activities within that Bridges lesson are problem-centered. They're really investigative. The teachers are really guiding class discussions and helping them to investigate topics that could really happen and put it into practice in the real world. And then there is that exploration piece, which is what we call the workplaces, which is center-based learning. So usually towards the end of the lesson, students will go off into these workplaces or centers and they're working on a game or an activity based on what the skills that they're learning for in that unit. So we also, in K through two, have an intervention model, which we have had for several years, but this year we've tweaked it a little bit to fit with our Bridges program. Fortunately, we have the Bridges Intervention Program. So we have two math paraprofessionals who are supported by Title I, who provide Bridges Intervention Program. So these students are identified at our grade level meetings, our data team meetings, where we identify students who may have gaps in their learning and they need some individualized instruction based on skills that they could have a gap in. So they then are supported by these paraprofessionals in the Bridges Intervention Program that nicely aligns with what they're learning in the classroom. And it's supporting the skills and strategies that they need at their level to fill in those gaps and close those gaps. We've seen some great success so far, especially in our second grade group because, as you can imagine, these kids did not have the Bridges program in kindergarten and first grade. So there are some instructional gaps that they have. So the intervention has been a nice compliment to be able to give those kids who need a little bit additional support, some extra time. So what that looks like, oh, sorry, is in K, kindergarten and first grade, we are pushing into classrooms primarily. First grade, we're kind of toying with now, we pushed in the beginning of the year. Now we're at a point where we feel like we need to pull the kids out a little bit more. In second grade, the kids have always been pulled out for intervention for the first half of the year. So we will reevaluate with grade level teams come January and decide what is best for the kids.
So next we have some feedback from teachers. So Jen solicited the positives and the negatives from teachers and we just figured that we'd capture those here.
So overall, I, I really have received like some really phenomenal feedback from teachers. They have been so positive and so hardworking with this program. It's not easy implementing a new program and they have just like gone with it and run with it and they're doing an awesome job. But as you can see, Kim Doherty, she said, my students have been so excited to enter the classroom in the morning and look at the number corner to observe the changes from the day before. They are actively engaged in discussion using appropriate math terminology and all of this is done independently through their own initiative. And Erin Shanahan, also a grade one teacher, Bridges facilitates and fosters more opportunities for students to explain their thinking. Students are being taught a variety of math vocabulary words that they're able to use in their daily math instruction discussions. The games and activities are highly engaging. Lindsay Jora is a grade one. I've seen a higher level of engagement, a greater variety of mathematical problem-solving strategies and an improved ability to explain their thinking. It's much more developmentally appropriate. And Karen Garrity, my second grade class is enjoying the Bridges program and I can see their mathematical knowledge growing each day. Bridges uses, uses an open exploration as a way to build on each student's critical thinking. Each day provides many hands-on opportunities for them to explore, investigate and discover key skills and concepts. The program is engaging and often the students don't want the lessons to end because they enjoy them so much. As this is my first year using the program, I am greatly looking forward to seeing how much my students will progress in math by the end of the year. And then.
Do you want me to read one?
Sure.
And then our K inclusion teacher, Jen Mitchell, said, "The introduction of the Bridges in Math Program has made a very positive impact on the kindergarten inclusion program. The program breaks down math skills and concepts and presents them in a fun multimodal format that really engages the students. Concepts are taught and then reinforced over the following weeks in different formats, both in a game format, at workstations, and in number corner. There are lots of opportunities for children to discuss, to build their math knowledge and to expand their thinking. Another thing I love about the program is the ability to differentiate for a variety of learners. The program accommodates children that need additional support and English language learners, as well as children that may need a challenge." So one of the teachers sent an example of a worksheet where she was very excited about what the student was able to do and Jen will explain that.
So this is actually from Kim Doherty. She actually sent this to me today. And I had to include it because this is, you know, the beginning of December and she, in her message to me, said, "I thought you might like to see this thinking that's going on. Look how this student shows the way to get to 10." I know it's because of number corner. So amazing for December in first grade. So if you look down at the bottom for number three, it says, "The question is, five plus five is one way to make 10. Show three other ways to make 10. You can use addition or subtraction equations." And you can see just by looking at these equations, I mean, this is, and this is an average student. This is not a student who you would say is a, you know, high achiever. And this is a, you know, a pretty on-level, grade-level student. And you can see that in first grade, they're already adding within the hundreds, which we have not seen before.
That's great, yeah.
So this is just one little example of the many examples that are happening throughout the classrooms.
So Mrs. Kelly also asked students what they thought.
So I went around to a couple of the classrooms and asked a couple of kids, you know, just how, how are you feeling about math this year? You know, is it different than last year? How do you like the new program? So a second grader said, "I like how it gives us harder math. It is a challenge. I like math because we get to learn new words," first grader, which I thought was very fascinating because the vocabulary. I mean, I was in second grade classroom yesterday and they were talking about isosceles triangles. I mean, that's not, again, a vocabulary term that's typically used in the past in a second grade classroom. "I like to work in small groups and explain my thinking," that's a first grader. "I feel happy about math because it's way different than kindergarten. We get to learn addition and subtraction." And I like learning, I like learning, working with the number lines. And that was a second grader.
So hopefully this will work, but we also have a video from our first grade classroom that we thought it might be fun for folks to see.
You're right, leave it in school for sixty-sixty. Can somebody tell me a way to make the number sixty-six? Nice job. Forty plus twenty makes us to sixty plus six. Makes sixty-six. Can I have another person show us a way to make the number sixty-six? Nice job. Ten plus fifty-six also makes a total of sixty-six.
So every day in first grade, they're, they're doing that, very similar, collecting numbers.
So in terms of how are students performing?
So, so right now, because this is the early stages of it, we're still trying to analyze how the students are performing on the program. Mastery for most of the standards, because the Massachusetts standards, the way that they, their, the way that they're written, they're end-of-the-year standards. So at this point, most of the standards mastery is not expected until the end of the year and that's the way it is laid out in the program as well. There are assessments throughout the year that give us checkpoints to say, to identify on a certain standard. It will give a predictor how a student is doing. So that kind of gives us some guidance to say, hey, if they're not doing great now, you probably should intervene. And they, they have some really great assessments in the way that they're aligned. It helps us to identify when students are struggling. The teachers are tracking the student data on a regular basis. They're inputting it into spreadsheets that Bridges have created. They find them very helpful because they're all color-coded. They're all, they're all aligned. It's very easy for them to do. They're really enjoying like the data that comes from it because it definitely drives the instruction for what they're going to do the next day or the next unit. And we are going to continue to do more analysis of our mid-year data come January when we get that, you know, middle-of-the-year checkpoint where we can kind of see where, how the kids have grown.
And we'd like to field any questions or comments, but before we do, Mrs. Kelly made the comment that anytime you engage in a new program, that there is a lot of work that goes with that. And when we were on-site visits last year and talking to other administrators and math coaches and teachers who were either piloting or had recently adopted Bridges, they were saying that when they engaged in the journey, that the first several months were painful in terms of the amount of prep involved and the kind of exhausting level of having to learn a new program, go implement it. And then sometimes it was successful, sometimes they'd have to go back and tweak something. And they said that typically, in the late winter, there was this aha moment where all of a sudden, they just like paused and looked at what their students were able to do and they said, "It made all of this struggle worth it." And I just wanted to compliment our educators because they knew that feedback going into this. And we were almost bracing for a pressure cooker experience. And if anything, we've had the complete opposite in terms of feedback. People have been highly positive. We've tried to really work with administration and with teachers to be mindful about the amount of professional development that they need and make sure that there's time allotted for them to work together. But I really want to just compliment Jen's work and the work of the teachers in terms of making sure that this implementation has been amazingly successful thus far.
Meredith, Jen, if you could just talk a little bit about the concept of building out three through five next year? And then also, I know three through five has had some access to some of the resources from Bridges. And if you want to touch base on how they may, what they're doing with that.
Yes. So the intention and recommendation of the curriculum committee was to obviously adopt K through two this year. And then next year, as a phase two, adopt three through five. And one of the things that Mrs. Kelly's coordinating right now is opportunities for teachers who were not on the curriculum council last year and may not have been able to see Bridges in action, for them to have the opportunity to go into a site visit this winter so that they can understand kind of where they're heading for next year. And some of that can take place within the school, but really looking at kind of their grade level in place in a different district. Likewise, Mrs. Kelly has worked with the Math Learning Center to ensure that we have online access right now. It's not a teacher's kit. It's not the teacher's material. But for teachers that want to this year in grades three through five, start to go in and access those materials and look at them online, they're able to do so. And a couple of them asked permission and said, "Can I start teaching this if I want to?" Just trying it on. So we know that the third grade team is largely doing that. We're doing teaming in grades three through five. So the three math teachers in grades three have been working together. And they have not had access to number corner because we have to wait to buy that and have that shipped. But they have had the opportunity to start to try on the Bridges component and the workplaces without the manipulatives, as Jen was referring to that. And then the other piece is that we're hoping to do the same thing where we give them professional development and access to those materials in June so that they have the gift of the summer to, to plan out.
Do you have any comments?
Is this reproductible, like disposable, or is it a lot of tech-based?
Almost no tech. So, yeah, so it's really interesting because the other like main competitor that we were looking at is very tech-based. So it was very interesting, but teachers felt so compelled by the fact that there is concrete representation, abstract and, and the opportunity for students to really develop those math concepts in their mind, that they were willing to kind of cash in and not have the tech component to it.
K through five?
K through five, yep.
So is there like a level of practice to help the kids prepare for the online requirement that they have though?
Yeah.
Because I'd prefer that as well, but then there's that gap of, then they've got to be able to use those online tools for the testing that they're required to do.
We actually asked that. When we were exploring last year and working with districts, we asked if, if they felt like that was an issue. So there is some prep that we do around the tech component of MCAS. And we've actually been working with teachers as a whole staff, talking about that component and access to things like the equation editor and those pieces and making sure that students have a chance to jump on that periodically and learn how to interact with that. But in terms of taking like MCAS practice tests and the correlation between that and Bridges, we feel confident that if your core is strong and if students have the opportunity to really gain number sense in, in the sense that they've mastered it, where they can apply it to a lot of different concepts or to a lot of different prompts, that that will end up paying off on MCAS. And it will be interesting to see how it turns out this year. Obviously, grades K through two aren't assessed in MCAS. But even the exposure that third grade has had to the program, which has been ad hoc and voluntary and, you know, not as comprehensive as it will be next year, it will be interesting to see if that does impact MCAS. Traditionally, when you look at implementing a new program, there's something called an implementation dip and it usually takes a couple of years.
Three to five years.
Yeah, for teachers to gain that muscle memory and for students to benefit from that common language that scales up from grade to grade. But it will be interesting, I think it'll be interesting, to see what happens. Because just judging from our K through two teachers, the example that Mrs. Doherty gave today about being so excited where students are in December, we've heard that a lot. And as Jen has been in classrooms, working with students and working with teachers, there tends to be a little bit of a utopian feel right now. Like, I can't believe our kids are doing this right now and they're able to get this, so.
And that's ultimately long-term what matters. I agree, their conceptual understanding is, is what's key because they'll be able to do that. But I also know that I'm never a fan of taking time to practice for MCAS, is practicing just how to take a test. But in the same sense, MCAS is tricky and they, they pose questions and have tools that are like, they're getting, they may know, conceptually know the answer, but they don't know how to get it outright on screen. So I'd be interested to see how that comes through too, because I agree that it's the concept understanding that really is going to support them no matter what test they take.
I think that that is an important consideration and one that we could definitely scaffold in. The other reality is because of the new building. The other reality is because of the new building that the town has supported, each of those classrooms in grade three through five have Chromebook carts. So every student can get on. And technology is infused in other content areas, be it science or, or history, social science, or English Language Arts. But in regards specifically to math, I think that's a good consideration going forward and appreciate that.
The ruler spin and turn.
Yes.
All kinds of little techniques.
So the ma, the Bridges Math Learning Center, they do have a suite of online tools that can, that can be accessed, whether it be on a projector or through a teacher account on a Chromebook.
So same as the manipulative.
Like a manipulative, yes. Where you can, you know, spin the ruler or the protractor. So there is that component of it. It's just not global in the sense where every student has their own account.
Yeah.
And to be honest, when we had everyday math, we did have student accounts that were included in our purchase of the program. And, and this could have been because we did not have the technology in the old school. But we did not have many students accessing those online accounts. Fortunately, we didn't pay for them. You know, it was, it was part of all lumped in together. But I mean, that was also two or three years ago as well. That could have, that could change now that we have the technology.
But I think that, that hands-on approach is already starting to show you positive results. So good luck, I hope that keeps going.
Yeah, we do too. We're hopeful.
Anybody else?
My only question was, when was the last time the math curriculum in K through two was changed?
So, oh, so everyday math, we have had for prob, prior to this for nine years, I want to say, but we had different versions. So we had everyday math, two thousand.
Maybe more even than that.
It could be even more actually, six maybe or seven. And then we had the, then they stamped it, the Common Core version, which wasn't really changed much. It was just a stamp. And then we got everyday math four. So it probably could have been nine or 10 years.
Yeah. I think it was about a decade or so.
Yeah. I've been here for thirteen, this is my 14th year in Carver, and I taught everyday math starting my second year. So that would answer my question.
Have you had any, I know it's early, but have you had any feedback from parents on this?
So, yes and no. I mean, to be honest, it's been a little bit quiet. But we have talked with teachers and I've talked with the teachers just to say like, what can we do to support parents? And so we've talked about different ideas for having like a math learning night where parents would come in and learn more about the program. There are newsletters that go home with the program, so parents have some information that gets sent home to them. I've heard of very few parents have concerns about homework, that they, they weren't, their child wasn't able to accomplish it, or the rigor is so much higher, like wow, this is like what my second grader's doing. But very few comments. We've tried to include some snippets in some of the newsletters in the beginning of the year too, but it's been pretty, pretty quiet.
Okay, well, I know it's early, so just curious.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I do think that there, there is the opportunity, once we are feeling more confident for us to present the information to parents, because I think that's important. Because this new math that everyone is worried and concerned about still is something that needs to be.
Such thing as new math.
I know, that's what I.
I just, I looked at you first.
And that's why I did the quotes, because it's not new. So, but I.
It's a different approach.
It's a different approach, yes.
Well, it sounds like the kids are motivated to do, to do it this way, you know, so it's.
The kids are excited. And that's, I would say the number one thing when I walk through classrooms is that there is definitely that excitement. And they're up, they're moving, they're learning, they're measuring, they're, they're in, they're just engaged. And they're not just sitting there passively, listening to a teacher talk, or even just playing a game. And they're really owning it.
Filling out a worksheet.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, one of the things you said that kind of got my ear up was the kids were excited to see something on Number Corner. Now, can you elaborate just a little more what Number Corner is for us?
Sure. So Number Corner is the calendar routine that happens every day. And in every grade level, it's different. But let me give you an example. So December kindergarten Number Corner, instead of having like the calendar pieces on like a traditional calendar, every day in the December kindergarten Number Corner, it's a different positional word. So they have a teddy bear in a box. And, you know, on December first, the, the teddy bear was inside the box. On December second, the teddy bear was in front of the box, to the right of the box, to the left of the box, behind the box. So the, every day, it's a different positional word and a different picture that shows that teddy bear in the box. So the students over the course of the month are making predictions about the pattern. So eventually, a pattern will happen and the kids will notice on every even day, the bear is going to be in a certain place. Or every seventh day, the bear is going to come back to the pattern. It, it, you kind of have to see it to understand it. But so that's one component of Number Corner is the actual physical calendar. Then they're collecting something every month. So that's building their number sense. So in kindergarten, they're collecting pattern blocks. So every day, they're reaching into a bag and they're pulling out, they spin a spinner and they have to pull out three, four, or five pattern blocks. They pull up the pattern blocks, they're counting the pattern blocks, they are identifying the pattern blocks, they're identifying the sides, how many sides are on the pattern blocks, the different shapes. Then at the end of the week, they lay it all out and then they, they make a larger collection. They're counting the days that they've been in school, how many tens, how many ones. There's so many components to it.
That's the piece we saw in the video.
Yes, yeah.
The video was the sixty-six day of school, well, how many ways can you make sixty-six?
Yeah. In, in every grade level, it's different, which I think is interesting from my perspective to see, because you can definitely see the building blocks. So you'll see a very similar activity done in kindergarten. The same activity is done in second grade, but the numbers are significantly higher or the concepts are significantly different.
Well, it sounds good to me. I mean, anything to, I mean, math can be a stressor for kids. You know, anything to make them more excited to do it and be more interested in it, in it is a good thing as far as I'm concerned.
It's very exciting.
My son talks about Math Corner all the time when I ask him about math, so.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, it's good.
Is kindergarten, first, first grade?
Yeah, so he's, he's pretty stoked about it, so it's.
That's great.
That's great. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, at this time Brad is going to make a budget presentation that outline the cost of a level service budget, which keeps all positions in the current fiscal year and compare it to the town's proposed budget figures at this time. In addition, we'll show the costs associated with adding a full-time technology teacher at the middle high school and a point-five science teacher to support development of the CTA pathways. These are very early estimates, but will give us a sense of where we stand in the process. Brad?
So just some notes about the FY21 level service. The school percentage of available revenue for operating budget is now sixty-nine point six eight eight percent. That's representing the four positions that we moved from the facilities department regarding salaries and benefits to the town and the school taking on the entire salary and benefits for the townwide technology director in the school budget. The level service, again, as Scott mentioned, is just that, is exactly level servicing all of what we do currently in this fiscal year to next fiscal year. Increases for fixed costs and contracts are included. And again, as Scott mentioned, this is very, very, very early in the process. Some of the highlights are, you guys will see in the back, in the actual shares builder, I put the line-by-line budget doc in there. There's been a lot of changes to code in the past year in terms of DESI reporting. For example, they now put technology into a facilities and infrastructure line. So it's out of what used to be an administrator line and it's now into its own facility slash infrastructure or technology line. And the goal of that is DESI is trying to drill down and see how much districts are spending on specific fields. So that is a few changes you'll see there. Copiers, we have a $30,000 savings in the capital line item you'll see later on at the next presentation. The town has created a townwide, district-wide copier line item, and that's going to save us $30,000 for the school. There's minor increases I built into contracted services for transportation. As you guys heard Karen Teicher earlier talk about, we are having struggles across transportation at all across, as you guys have heard, both for our regular routes and our special ed. So that is something I see that we're going to need to put a little bit more money in for next year. Again, it doesn't guarantee that anyone will ever be able to service some of our routes we have, but this number is representative of what I feel the true cost will be for next year. Roughly, I built in a five percent overall increase to utility lines. Our actual fixed costs for utilities are locked in. The problem is, there's two things on a lot of split, excuse me, utility costs. There's a supply cost and there's a delivery cost. And the delivery costs are actually going up anywhere from eight to 10 percent was a little notice I got, and I'm sure you guys got it too, from, I think Eversource sent it out. So we will be getting that piece of it. But reality is, the delivery piece is a small portion of our overall cost for that. So five percent is in the general ballpark of what we need to do. Plymouth County Retirement Board, we have that actual number, that is an eight percent increase. Again, the town and school, they have a shared percentage of that. The town picks up 56 percent of that bill and the school represents 44 percent. An eight percent increase of that costs us 75,000. That is built into the budget as a fixed cost. Health insurance right now is at seven percent. That is how I built it into the budget. Preliminary estimates from Gateway have been positive. If they were to close the books as of today, they said the number they would go with is four percent. You guys know though, that has changed or fluctuated all the given, all the time. So I'd rather start high and we'll work our way down as we go through our budget process. That way we're not going in the wrong direction, we can only go in the right direction. Auto insurance, we've been hit with a lot of claims this year. Both sides that some we've been responsible for and both we've actually not been responsible for, but how Maya works for insurance renewals for auto is regardless if you are at fault or not, it gets put into your overall pool of what you take out for money. And if we get a, I shouldn't say negative rating, but if we hit a cap on that, which I'm assuming we already have, they're going to increase that bill. So I feel like 20 percent is a fair estimate on that. Yeah. Sped tuitions, this is a positive. Right now, we are looking lower cost overall from this fiscal year to next. So that is one positive trend. Again, we know that can change at any given time. And we also budgeted seven vocational students for next year. There's five current. And one thing I, one thing I want to mention is Bristol Ag, as you guys know, bill's back for your prior year. So fiscal year 20 right now, we have one student there. So that is what next year's bill will be no matter what. So we have that locked in. So this add additional two, none of the, the four kids at Norfolk are not going to be graduating, they're not seniors yet. So if they stay in that program, we'll have at least five if everyone stays. And then we added on two more. But again, this is something we're hopeful that will, will drop as we go forward. And those both are at, I think a budget of $22,000 each per school. So that's 44,000 that we may get back into our overall operational. As far as percentage increases, I just want to go across the row for the town first. If you look at FY20, our final number was 23,840,000. The FY21 town number right now is 24,237,000, which represents a $400,000 increase. It comes out on paper as a 1.66 percent increase. But I want to note that this is based on the one-year catch-up of the four positions we're moving over. In reality, it's, the school's actually getting a 2.56 percent increase. It's just the way that the adjustments are shaking out for the first year, it shows as a 1.6. But again, in reality, it is a 2.6 percent increase to our budget.
Because we're comparing a budget that doesn't have four positions against the budget that did have those four positions in it. So if you add those four positions back in to our side of the budget, around.
It'd be another 200,000.
Around 200,000. So our real increase would be about 600,000.
But on paper, it shows as four. And then just to highlight where we were last year, the school presented level service last year. I want to say we did that in either January or was it this January? We were actually $400,000 short on our level service, what, if we did request a level service budget. This year, we're at, our level service cost is 24,319,000, which is an increase from FY20 actual to FY21 level service of 478,000, which is a 2 percent increase. I want to recap our offsets, just so everyone knows where all the money's going. We've built in two, for our grants, 240 and 305, 650,000. And that is offsetting our elementary school, middle high school paraprofessional lines. Circuit breaker is 465,000, and that is our out-of-district tuitions. I did not include any additional offset for circuit breaker for transportation, just because they haven't rolled out yet how they're going to phase that piece in. And they, they, they did state it would be phased in over four years. But I have a feeling they're going to put all, as much in chapter 71, and then they're going to struggle to backfill all of this. So I think this will be secondary. We will get the money, it's just a matter of when it actually is fully implemented. And I think playing it safe with 465 is our best bet right now. Tuitions in are zero. That's representing of how many kids we have that we believe are going to be tuitioned in from any other town, let's say Middleborough or whatever means to one of our special ed programs, that may adjust as well. Preschool, we're not requesting any fee increases, but that may be something we talk about later on through the budget process. We're estimating taking again 50 grand as the offset. That goes right to offset pre-K teacher salaries. School choice, we're going to represent 400,000 this year. We've always just offsetted as CES teacher salaries. Realistically, you could offset that anywhere you really wanted to. I just have always kept that there because originally when we opened up school choice, the offset was at the elementary. So I just have always left that there. I don't personally think it matters where we charge it to, but if you guys had a different idea of where you wanted to offset it to, but again, at the end of the day, it's just offsetting our overall budget. Athletics at 150 per sport, I kept that offset the same. I will be looking deeper with numbers with the athletic director to see the new change in enrollments for the current sports. Middle high school intramurals is an offset to revolving salaries and transportation costs. And then the parking fee of $50 per year, again, goes right into offset middle high school graduation. And then items still in play. Health insurance rates, again, that's about $30,000, just over 30,000 per percentage that we dropped off. So hopefully, if we do drop down to three, that's almost $100,000 right there that we're back into our overall operational budget. Out-of-district tuitions, that is up in the air, like we said before. Voke tuition still may go down. And school choice, that'll be up for you guys to approve as we go forward. And then for potential funding requests that we may bring forward is the 1.0 technology teacher. And these are representative of the CTE programs that we've been talking about for, I think over about a year now. 90,000, which represents a master step 11 plus a individual PPO health insurance plan. Realistically, when you're trying to find a technology position like this, it's hard to find someone brand new that's at the lower step schedule. And especially when we're trying to design, to design a curriculum, but also it's kind of, it's still a new program for everyone across the state pretty much. So this will be something that we are.
Not saying you couldn't bring in a new teacher, but it would.
Reality of.
Probably be difficult to bring in.
Exactly, exactly. And then same as the point-five science teacher, this again will help the CTE programs. We've had that as a master step six plus the health insurance, that's an estimate of 40,000. Every year, we've had this on here, additional department line item funding for both CES and the middle high school. I know all departments would like additional funding. This is honestly usually the first thing that we reduce out of our budget as we get down to the town's number. That is something we'd like to increase. And then also an ESL budget line item for $4,000. Right now, that's run out of grant Title I. We're trying to get that out of Title I and into our actual operational budget. And the grand total of all of those is 154,000. But again, that's not saying we're actually going to request that at, when we come with our budget recommendation. But these are just things for potential.
Anybody have any questions? Concerns, comments?
Early, early, exactly. But I just want, it's, we're, we're.
Wanted to get the discussion going.
Good heads up though Brad, thank you very much. We're, I just wanted, the, the biggest piece about this is we are less than.
Close.
100,000.
About eighty thousand. $8,000 off the town's number.
Compared to 400,000 where we were last year.
Yeah, the year before that.
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
All right, thank you Brad.
Bad place to begin.
Yep. Upcoming events?
Yeah, we just have a traditional list of upcoming events for the committee, which I think we've given a copy to Kathy as well, so hopefully we'll get those promoted in our, out in the community. I don't, I'm not going to necessarily highlight anything on the list, I'll just put it up on the board. Obviously, we're in the holiday concert season right now. Coming up, actually, I think one of the, one of the concerts was actually this evening, was currently happening at the elementary school. We have the middle high school, the middle school concert coming up next Tuesday. I said I wasn't gonna highlight the events, I stopped, so I'll stop, I'll highlight any events, but there, there they are. Ready to move on to recommendations, or any comments on the upcoming events?
No, I have no comments on, anybody else, sorry? Do you want to go back and approve the, the prior minutes we missed earlier?
Can we, just cause Dave's, Dave's come to present as well, so if we could bring Dave up now?
Okay.
That would be great, it's, not that it would take long for us to do the minutes, but
No, it's fine, it's fine. Hi Dave.
Evening.
So Dave's agreed to join me to talk about this a little bit, I'll kind of give a general overview and then we can ask Dave questions. Can we ask Dave questions, so Dave can fill in what I, what I'm talking about? So townwide emergency, sorry, energy reduction plan. As part of agreeing to becoming a green community, the town had Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, SERPED, develop a townwide energy reduction plan. The town, including the schools, has committed to reducing energy use by five percent over the next five years. The plan that's in front of you, which is pretty intensive, actually identifies ways in which the town could reduce energy consumption by twenty percent over the next five years. Not everything in the plan is gonna happen, but it gives us a roadmap on how we could reach the targets. In speaking with the town and the town administrator, they've committed to using capital funds over the next few years to accomplish the parts of the plan. The plan does make recommendations for all the buildings in the town, including the buildings, the school buildings, so the middle high school, the central office building, and the bus park. It does not include the elementary school, because the elementary school being a new building is considered energy efficient. So it has no recommendations for the elementary school. So Mary, just as an example, I don't know if you can scroll down to, it's, I can tell you what page it is.
There are eighty-seven pages.
For, to scroll down for
Little admins on fourteen.
To the central office building, page fourteen. It'll just give you a list of, you know, what they're recommending at that building. And then Dave, I don't know if there's, I don't know if that's a good summary of where we stand, your knowledge of it, and you, you were involved in going around and walking through each of the facilities and
Yes, what they did is Scott said, rise engineering came through and they toured every building, they inventoried every building. That also included them taking a lot of data from the school business office and from town hall as far as all our energy usage, electricity, gas, oil, propane, and also gasoline and diesel. So they looked at all our energy usage and came up with one large number. And that's the number we're working off of that has to be reduced over the next five years, as Scott said, by twenty percent. They don't mandate how it, where it comes from or how you get there. Basically, as he said, they gave, they gave suggestions, and if you look through it, basically
So I, I just pulled up the town administration building, because it was an easy one.
Yep.
So the first one on that list is hard to read a lot, Mary, can you make that a little bigger actually? Yeah, so it's, you replace, make them all LED lights, so replace all the lighting.
And, and that's gonna be a low-hanging fruit in about every building, is gonna be the lighting. Is to do that, and is about, they say, an average of ninety percent increase in efficiency over the lighting. And that also helps us on, basically with LED lighting, there's not as much maintenance. So we're gonna see a reduction in our overall operating money we spend on lighting, which is quite a bit.
And then, you know, the following weatherization measures, measures are recommended. You know, there's an attic in that building, so go in and totally insulating that attic, and there's not, actually, there's very little insulation up there. So like bringing up to the standard of making that much more energy efficient by insulating that attic, ceiling ducts, furnish and install the insulation, weather stripping on a thermodome for that attic. And stew, install new weather stripping and appropriate sweeps to three single-entry doors. You know, so it gives very specific look at each individual building.
So basically, this was almost like having Mass Save
Come in.
From India House, but they did it for our commercial buildings. One thing that's being done this spring is, we actually have five hundred and seventy-three, if I recall, streetlights in town, those are being converted to LED. Most of that is grant money, I don't know the exact numbers, but I believe the town had to contribute less than twenty-five percent. So all our LED lighting will, so right there, that's gonna reduce our energy consumption, which is gonna help off this bottom line.
Streetlights count too, do they?
Yes, yep.
You know, and then also the school administration building had talked about replacing the two furnaces with high, high efficiency condensing furnaces. So basically, this is just a sample, they did this type of, I'll look at every single building in town.
And, and those are things, actually, that is on the capital plan this year for those two furnaces to be replaced as central. And they broke it down, so most of the things we'll go for are the ROIs, the low number ROIs, your return on investment. Some of them you look at, there's, I've seen forty, I've seen ninety year return on investment. Obviously, that doesn't make sense, and it wouldn't be something we need to do. So as we enter into this, we'll be looking at what we're going to go after, what I think will get us that number. And it's not gonna come out of the operating budget on the school's side, so but this is something that the school committee and the board of, the select board do have to agree to enter into.
Dave, any, any updates, like insulation furnaces, things like that? Like the regular residential person, if they go through Mass Save, sometimes there's, you know, discounted loans or
Yeah, and that, and that's what, through these grants, yes.
Just the grant.
Yep, we'll look at that, yep.
Okay, so there's
And we'll work with, and through that, they'll work with Eversource to see if they offer any incentives as well, if there's any rebates or anything of that nature.
And any, like the boilers we have, the furnaces we have at the central office, are you gonna be doing efficiency tests on those, or, or do you know for sure they're just old and
Oh, they're old, yeah, I've, I've had them on Capitol for a while, yeah, yep.
So I don't know if there's any additional questions from the committee, I mean, ultimately, there is actually a requirement that this plan be approved by the school committee and the select board. So it's brought forward for you tonight, so I'd make a recommendation for you to approve the plan.
I'll make a motion to adopt the town of Carver Energy Reduction Plan as developed by the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District.
Have a second?
I'll second that, I have a question though. I, I will, I will nitpick through this list, I just saw something that caught my eye when I was looking through.
Yep.
Under, under the middle high school, it says there are gaps causing air leakage to the wall and roof connection on the perimeter of the school in some sections. Didn't we just do a bunch of replacement with that?
Well, they did, they did windows, so through the accelerated repair
Yeah.
Two years ago, yes, we did, new roof, new windows, doors, and boilers.
So if, if, new roof
I haven't looked at the specifics, so they, they went around with an infrared camera, so maybe they picked up some areas where there is leakage. And that's most likely, obviously, because the insulation was brought up to code the decking insulation under the roof. So that's already helped us as far as energy versus summer heat getting in and winter, losing heat in the winter. But I, you know, look at their report and see exactly where, but overall, we're much better than we were, because a lot of the insulation that was there was wet, because the old roof did leak.
Yep.
And wet insulation gives you a, a zero factor, so. We're better than we were, and, and these numbers that they use were FY nineteen, I believe, so that's the baseline we're working off of.
Dave, the lighting at the new field, the new turf field, I take it, are those LED or those something else?
Yes.
They are, okay.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Actually, the, the walkway lights and these stadium lights are LED.
Figured they might be since they were brand new.
Yeah, and, and that was an option we had, we looked at it, we paid extra money to go with the LED, but it's, it's well worth it, yeah.
You gotta do it anyway.
Yep.
Alright, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you Dave.
You're welcome.
So I don't know if you want to go back up to the minutes now?
Yeah, when we, uh
So, so we don't lose it?
Alright.
Alright.
So I'll, I'll make the motion to accept the Thursday, October tenth, twenty nineteen, open session minutes.
Have a second?
Second.
No, it hasn't, it hasn't.
Oh. Okay, he seconded.
Second.
Alright, any corrections, concerns, comments? Alright, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye?
Stand.
Uh, four and one, abstention. Thank you.
There's three and two.
Three. Oh. Three and two abstentions. Oh, two, oh, I, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We had three members present that evening.
My bad. You got that, you got that, did you? Capital?
I think, yeah, Brad's gonna kind of put these two together, it's on one presentation.
Yeah, it's on one presentation, but the first one is a student.
Student activity
Student activity sub-accounts.
Yep. As I mentioned, you guys, last month meeting, we had our student activity account review, you're supposed to do one every three years. And one of the write-ups that they had on the review was that the school committee actually needs to approve all sub-accounts. Kind of find that odd personally, because to me, student activity accounts are student-specific, and it really is handled by the principal on a day-to-day basis. It's not under school committee per view, I, in my opinion, but
Are you saying the general sum or, or per transaction?
The, just the sub-accounts, so you'll see like, so Exactly, so if you look on this, the, on the PowerPoint right here, all of these accounts are at our elementary school that I'd like to be approved today. You guys actually could go one by one and kick out one if you wanted to. But again, that's where I kind of disagree with why school committee oversees them, but realistically, at the end of the day, that's the DESI's regulation and that's the policy. So I don't, elementary school honestly is very, very simple, there's not much to it.
Do you want to do this?
Would you like to separate them, or do you want?
Bunch them, I'd bunch them.
Alright, so can we just go up?
Yep, and then, any questions, I guess, on elementary? No? And then the middle high school. Exactly, exactly. And a lot of these are just representative of the clubs that we offer. A few of these clubs have, have a sitting balance that aren't currently running. But I felt like, when I, when I posted this list, this captures everything that may come back. But again, at any given point, if money sits on an account for three years, you're actually supposed to close that account and disperse the money between all active accounts. And we did that two years ago, I think, my first, so three years ago when I first started. And we went through and closed out all the old balances. And these are just the counts that I feel like we should keep open right now. Whether or not there's a zero balance or not in them.
So do you want to bundle?
I have questions, now we're starting.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I see that there are four, like, junior, senior, freshman, are there any sixth grade, seventh grade ones that accounts also like class of twenty-four, twenty-five, that just builds up over time?
The count, I believe, is middle school student government.
Yes, that's kind of the only one, isn't it?
Yes, so the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade money is all lumped together on the middle school student government, I believe. There should be a middle school student government.
About two third, or about a third down on the right-hand side.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, they're all capped, it's
I'm, I'm just, I was just curious, it's, I mean, well, we have to come back each year and approve, like, next year, we're gonna have to
If there's changes
Twenty-four, then the twenty twenty-five.
Exactly, yeah.
So there's gonna be changes each year.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
That's fine, just
Yep. Um, there's the one, the school committee policy too, just to refresh you guys on this. When a senior class graduates, they have ninety days after graduation to either spend all of their money, or they can donate to the school a, a gift. If not, it gets dispersed over the ninth through junior, now tenth through senior accounts, the money gets divided out evenly.
So I'll make a motion to approve the list of student activity sub-accounts at the elementary and middle high school.
Second.
Second. You have a second? Any discussion, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no?
And Brad will go right into ten-year capital plan.
Alright, so we're looking for approval for our overall capital plan. In your background, you'll see the overall ten years, I believe I put that in there, I know Scott, you put the
Yeah, and actually, it links right says here. The ten-year, ten plan, ten, ten-year plan is linked here.
Okay. And that's the overall town-wide, that incorporates both school requests and everything for every department throughout the town. But transportation, we'll start there, we're requesting two buses, seventy-one passenger full buses, that are gonna replace our two thousand eight buses and one minibus, which is kind of interesting. Thought the cost of these were kind of crazy when I first started, but actually, when you look at, and you go inside of them, we set them specifically for preschool needs, and they're actually built in like car seats and buckle, it's not car seats, but it's buckles and everything that you would really want in a minibus, so it looks expensive, but the actual way we designed and spec it, it's pretty in-depth. Is FY twenty-one notable items? The first one is district-wide curriculum, this is something that I think is gonna help our overall budget operating in the near future. But for the first year, we're requesting a hundred thirty thousand, thirty thousand of that is gonna be looked at for C, Carver Elementary School reading curriculum. In the past, money has always been used at the end of the year to catch up our curriculum needs, perfect example of that is our bridges program. Last year, we looked, we had some money available to spend, and that's how we actually afforded that bridges program that you guys saw tonight. This kind of ties into our overall budget, where when we get caught in the how do we fund the last couple thousand dollars of our budget, these are always a cut that unfortunately happens. And getting this locked into capital is an absolutely positive thing for the school. So again, we are requesting a hundred thirty thousand this year, thirty thousand for the elementary school reading program to review, doesn't mean we have to buy it. That's the one key thing too, is once we have the money allocated in that for capital, if we don't spend it, it rolls over. So we don't have to rush, rush to make decisions on that. But the big piece of this is a hundred thousand is gonna be allocated toward the middle high school CTE programs in regards to the new, rolling out of those two programs we'd like to do. Pieces of that include networking, twenty computer setups, six esport desk setups, interactive LCD projector, or I shouldn't say projector, but TV monitor, a three D printer, a color poster printer, a laser engraver, and software specifically for the tech engineering program. I don't know, Scott, if you want to add on to that?
No, except that Mrs. Schultz has actually done, and I, we didn't put it in the background, but they certainly give me copies of it, a breakdown of a hundred thousand dollars of, and you'll estimate it as spent expenses of how that money would be spent to spend to, to support the CTE program, which is basically what Brad just said, it's the same as Brad just
Mostly hardware.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, these are all capital goods.
Is that three D printer in addition, don't we have one now, is that a replacement or in addition?
Addition.
Okay.
Brad, I have a question.
Yeah.
The money for, and this is a hundred thousand is mainly for hardware, but the thirty thousand for reading, why isn't, you said it's, it's a good thing to come out of capital, but why isn't this in our own budget?
Because the swings of curriculum needs really don't fit into our operational budget. Realistically, if you were to think about if we, if we had to implement this new program, right, where would we find a hundred thousand dollars in our operational budget, and have to come at the cost of something else? And this hundred thousand is a one-year cost. To implement these programs, honestly, it's probably gonna be a couple years that we need that amount of money. But when that money falls off, or you don't need as much in there anymore, you, you, you're kind of fluctuating with your operational budget for, I don't, I want to say one-time needs, but temporary capital needs.
Especially with a hundred thousand, I can see it's mostly like hardware type of goods.
Yep.
Like I said, anything else I thought, being our own, we had this discussion before, in our own budget.
Yep, and we do, it's not that we don't fund anything out of there, it's just very limited on, to get a new curriculum, the bridges, I think, was forty thousand? Does that sound right, Mary? I could, I could be a couple thousand off either way, but again, like, you've gone through our budget processes, now it's, it's, it's tough to find that money unless you have end-of-year savings. And that's how, to my knowledge, a lot of the curriculum needs here have always been that.
So going, going, we're going way back. But when I first started here in the nineties, so going way back, there was a hundred thousand dollar curriculum line item, and the district had a curriculum revision cycle. And every year, a subject, English, math, science, social studies, would have a hundred thousand dollars to spend to upgrade materials. So over a five or six-year process, everyone's materials were always updated. When, after two thousand and one, when we hit that first recession, two thousand one, two thousand two, that was, that was the first like big cut that I remember. There were, so honestly, there weren't many cuts in the nineties. We grew, we expanded. And when we hit that one recession, recession in two thousand two, that hundred thousand dollar line item was removed, and it hasn't come back since. And so since that time, how we do curriculum is really how Brad described it, it's almost catch, just catch can. When money's available, you know, if we, if we had a good year with heating and there's fifty thousand dollars, we purchase some curriculum textbooks. So the town is saying to us, and we're saying, this is a need, this is a concern, and we don't have the money to just build it back into our own operating budget as currently constituted. So the town is saying, we're, we're gonna be willing to support curriculum. We, we think we can support you through curriculum, through capital outlay. And so if you look at the ten-year plan, there's actually money in each of the ten years to support curriculum development at, within the Cal Public Schools.
And the goal would be to get a group, a group together, whether it's professional development or actually a curriculum team that gets everything on that renewal cycle that we used to have, that would be the goal.
I'm not saying it was a bad thing, I was just, because I was curious, I mean, the first time I'd seen it was when we bought textbooks a few years ago, with capital. And that was
And, and there has been concerns sometimes about, is, is a textbook a capital good? And you, we could maybe make the argument of that money should just be put into the school's operating budget.
Right.
That's an argument that could be made.
Alright, technology?
And then cul- culinary upgrades.
Oh.
Yep, we're requesting a hundred thousand, and that's gonna represent a hood fan installation with the appropriate fire suppression, suppression system, plumbing and electrical upgrades, a convection oven, commercial fryolator, commercial griddle and flat grill, a new freezer and a new refrigerator. And again, we're really in the design phase of what we want that program and that space to really look like, so this is really early. Preliminary estimates we had were right around two hundred thousand for this overall project, so we're gonna look closely at what we can do to get that for a hundred, or what we can get for a hundred. So we're gonna look closely at what we can do to get that for a hundred or what we can get for a hundred. Um, but we may see future needs down the road to truly bring out our full vision of what we want the culinary program to be.
And we've had the culinary upgrades as in year one, uh, for several years, and the town, through their process, has pushed that back for several years. I think at this time, the town's plan is to support that, uh, so that, I think that's a, that's a, that's a great thing.
Next one is townwide technology, um, and this just represents how all the money is allocated in the overall, um, lump sum. So townwide copiers is eighty-five thousand, town and school PC replacements is twenty-six thousand each, Chromebooks is a hundred thousand, middle high school classroom upgrades is forty thousand, and that represents, um, Scott, is that a four LCD four?
Uh, clear touch projector.
Four clear touch, which is includes?
More than four would be.
Ten?
Yeah, yeah.
Ten?
They're, they're four to five thousand dollars each, so eight to ten.
Eight to ten, and that includes the, um, equipment, installation, um, all the wiring that needs to be done.
So right now, all of our, all of the math classrooms, um, in the high school have a clear touch projector. And our LCD projectors are actually getting old, uh, and so there's some interest in going to, from the LCD projector on the whiteboard to, uh, the clear touch in, in, uh, digital classrooms and do, do that over time, do so many classrooms a year.
And then the townwide internet at two gigs is twenty-five thousand, and then townwide wireless access points, um, this is a three-year finance. Um, the payment actually isn't due until two years, but the way we looked at money being allocated for that, we're gonna start putting money away for that this year and then be able to finance it for, uh, three years after that for the first full payment we'll have two years from now. Yep.
Can you just explain the town school PC replacement?
Yep, so it, it pretty much represents, um, let's say, last year, we, we did a whole upgrade, um, at the middle high school. So depending on what's in the recycle plan that they have, they'll hit that area, and that's just keeping up with our, I think that we have a, the technology, maybe it's a five years we replace?
Yeah, I think national average is four years, but really, what we've done in the past is tried to, um, make sure that it's still upgradable because we haven't been able to comply with those requirements. And so, um, we just wanna make sure that it can upgrade to whatever, um, Windows.
I read, but that's not twenty-six thousand for each device.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no.
By the way, I read that, I'm sitting there, I'm just like.
No, 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 twenty-six thousand total available.
That's what it looks like, man.
That's what I looked, I'm just like, I wanted to be.
No.
Be a big appropriation.
No, twenty-six thousand each for the town.
Expensive, tax man.
Each spent is twenty-six thousand available, the school's budget, twenty-six thousand.
I just wanted to be clear on that, just with the.
They probably make a PC that is twenty-six thousand.
Encrusted gold.
The math guy.
I was gonna say that, yeah, so it's had the.
Okay, Mary, the next one. Operations and maintenance. I just want to be known that, um, a lot of pieces that used to be in the schools' capital requests now got pulled out and they are labeled under operations and maintenance. Their department submits their request directly to the town. One piece that's not in the O and M, um, request, that's in, currently in the school department, is twenty thousand for school library study slash upgrades. Um, we have met with a design consultant that did take a look at our library. They, um, are in the process of giving us a a design with, what the recommendation would be for the space. We've talked a lot about going to the Makerspace model, and I don't know, Meredith or Scott, if you guys wanna dive into that. Uh, but I'm sure once we get an actual design, we could come and give you guys a, a bigger picture of what it is. Twenty thousand is not gonna cover much at all. It's just getting us off that phase if we do need an architectural study to have that money allocated, but I don't think we're gonna have to go there. I think it's gonna be a, uh, what we have for a space, figure out what we're doing with it. Good. Do you wanna add?
Double good.
Yeah, so there'll be more to come on that as we go through the process. As Dave mentioned, we're gonna replace two HVAC units at central office, um, forty-five thousand for that. Replace the middle high school clock system, that's forty-five thousand. Middle high school field irrigation, that's a hundred thousand. We also have money left over from the, um, turf project for that, that we can use as, in addition to that. In the townwide building and field maintenance, this is new this year, um, that's representing an additional funding source for the overall contract that we talked about for keeping all of our townwide fields on a, um, fertilization.
Fertilization, all that whole piece to pay for that.
And items there in the future, um, two to four years is continued funding for townwide technology, transportation, and curriculum. Specifically at the middle high school, we have locker room renovation, student desk, and library renovation. Um, in the five to ten-year window, we're looking at continued funding for technology, transportation, and curriculum again. Middle high schools' rest, restroom fixtures, auditorium renovation, and student lockers. And at the elementary school, it's really to be determined, um, but technology components are built into the overall technology, townwide tech plan. Um, but that's phased in, in about three years to four years. Um, you'll see a big one-time lump sum. And that'll be to get everything on the five-year replacement cycle that its useful life is ending. I know people don't like hearing me say this, but the day we walked into elementary, the technology was old. That's just how quickly technology changes over, so that's one piece I think we're gonna be cognizant of, of continually putting money in to replace that and keep it upgrading.
Clear example of that, I think, we may have gone clear touch six months later at the, at the elementary school. Versus doing, yeah, versus doing the, uh, the overhead projectors. All right, is anybody else, any, uh, questions for Brad, comments?
And one thing, I just wanna know, um, this represents what the school admins approved to the town. Um, you guys are approving this list. Um, but the funding for items two, two to ten years out can be moved all around. So even though we have it on our list for two years, ten years, it could be shuffled around depending on.
What we're approving right now for year one is actually being supported by the town. So we've met with the town administrator. A capital A committee had its first meeting. Uh, they, you know, the capital A committee hasn't voted official approval of the whole plan yet. Uh, but through our initial meetings, uh, everyone's in support of what we're saying is year one. We had, uh, abstaining motion to approve the district's capital improvement plan?
I oppose the motion. Uh, I move to approve the district's capital improvement plan as presented this evening.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Just a note on that too, one thing, um, we have been able to secure, um, I think they're six years old, locker, gym lockers from Hampton Wolverham, um, regional school district, so we, Dave went with a truck. We took about twenty of them back. We have about twenty more, um, that honestly, they, they look brand new, so we'll be able to replace a couple of our old lockers in the gym out, um, for both, uh, male and female.
Great.
Locker rooms.
All right, disposal of obsolete tech? I, I'll, I'll sign it for this evening. Uh, the technology department has requested the list of items attached, be approved for recycling. These items either are broken or have no use of life, uh, in any town department. And you can pull up the list if you want to, it's a, um, there were some TVs from nineteen eighty-seven. Favorite is looking, favorite is looking for those, uh, on the list. Retro. All right, any, any questions or concerns?
No.
Anybody?
No, I'll make a motion. I, I move to approve the list of obsolete items to be given to Brad.
Second? No, to be, uh, recycled. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Aye. Reports from the school committee. Anybody like to start? Ladies first, maybe? You don't have to.
First of all, I wanna say, um, thank you to everyone that participated in the Reis across Carver project for, um, Veterans Police and Fire. Um, it was really great to see, um, so many of the students and people from all walks of life across the community come together for that. Um, one thing I also did wanna give, um, some, I think they were all high school students a shout-out for, um, volunteering at the, uh, Christmas crafter at the Carver Council on Aging last weekend. Um, it was really great to see so many students there. Um, the seniors loved interacting with them. They had fun. Some of them exch- exchanged phone numbers, um, made future plans to get together, so it was really, um, really, really, it was completely, completely unexpected when I got there, but it was really, really nice to see, so, thank you for the people that put that together. I always, I think I almost always mention school buses. Please don't pass them. Please just be patient, especially now that we have weather, um, the streets are icy and a little bit narrower, so please just be mindful of the school buses and um, enjoy your music while you're waiting for them to pick up, pick up or drop off the students, and just stay safe. Um, and of course, I wanna wish everyone an excellent holiday break, cause we won't be together again until after the new year. Um, so everyone have a safe, healthy, happy holiday break and a wonderful new year.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
I, this, I hope everybody has a safe and happy holiday season. This is a tough time of year, cause the weather goes from twenty to fifty and the roads are not always in the best condition, so please enjoy your holiday break, but be safe.
Um, I just wanted to quickly recognize Ronald Mitchell, um, and the Mitchell family. Uh, Mr. Mitchell passed away on Sunday, uh, following a long illness. Uh, he was a teacher in the district for thirty-four years. Um, and his wife was a teacher in the district also, so our thoughts and prayers go out to the Mitchell family.
All right, um, I just say, uh, I wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and Happy New Year and I hope everyone stays safe and, um, I will say, because I don't, maybe I won't say it often enough, this time of year where we all wanna be happy and peaceful and everything, maybe, uh, maybe it might be a good time for somebody, anybody, anybody you might have had a disagreement with or an argument with or hadn't spoke to in a long time, to maybe reach out and rekindle those relationships a little bit. You know, just in the spirit of the season. That's it. Good night, oh, uh, oh, wait, can't do that, yeah.
Yeah, I was.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I, I move to, move to executive session to discuss.
Yes.
Strategies with respect to collective bargaining in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining.
Not, not to return, not to return.
And not to return to open session.
All right, we have a second, we have a second. Are you motioning a second? All those in favor? I'll roll call though. Oh, sorry, I'll roll call.
Aye.
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 All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.